Council meeting of Wednesday, October 5th, 2011. Could I have the roll call, please?
Andrea Burns.
Present.
Justin Cobb.
Present.
Ron Chattenoff.
Present.
Don Psychowski.
Yeah.
Salem Derby.
Present.
Dan Hagan.
Present.
Jess McCoy.
Here.
Dan Rist.
Here.
Joy Winnie.
Here.
Could I hear a motion for approval of the minutes of September 21st, 2011?
Second.
We have a motion to second approval of the minutes of September 21st, 2011. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstain? No? Okay, motion passes. Public speak time. There's somebody here who would like to address the council besides being other than what's on our public hearing. Please come to the podium and state your name and address. Okay, not being seen, moving on to communications from elected officials, boards, and committees. Counselor Rist. Plan board, your announcements, I guess.
Well, we have a request from the Board of Assessors to begin process for setting the tax rate. I'd like to move that to the Finance Committee for review.
Second. Okay, we have a motion to second to move to finance the discussion over setting tax rate for 2012. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same? Motion passes. Thank you.
I have a couple of announcements. The East Hampton Planning Department will hold a public forum to prepare and present the 2012 to 2014 Community Development Strategy, which details the city's community development needs and establishes a priority list for the implementation and funding of community development projects. Copies of the current Community Development Strategy and priorities are available in the Planning Department here at 50 Payson Avenue. Residents, businesses, and organizations with an interest in these or other projects should attend to present their views. Changes in priorities will be presented, and recommendations for change are welcome. The date of this public forum is Wednesday, October 12th, 2011, 6:00 PM, Municipal Office Building, 2nd Floor Meeting Room, which is right here. Okay? The second thing to announce is very important to the kids. The Rag Shag Parade Candy Bagging will be held Tuesday, October 25th, 10:00 AM at the Public Safety Complex. Anybody who wants to help bag candy for all the kids is welcome to attend. That's Tuesday, October 25th, 10:00 AM. Thank you.
Great, thank you. We have no correspondence today, so we're moving to Mayor Communications. Mayor Tosner?
Good evening, Mr. President, councilors. Just one item this evening, and that is the presentation of Administrative Code to address an issue that came to light last month. This involves setting a requirement that established boards and committees present the membership of newly formed subcommittees to the City Clerk's office so that those members may be formally sworn and provided with conflict of interest and open meeting law information.
Okay, so I think probably entertain a mo- motion.
I'll make a motion to send that to Rules and Government Relations for review.
Okay, we have a motion to second to move to Rules and Regulations, the new Administrative Code concerning the establishment of subcommittees with our public municipal committees and multiple member bodies. I note the City Clerk did send out some requirements for those. There are some requirements for Administrative Codes that will be moved. Okay, moving on.
You need to vote on it.
I just, just a second. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion passes. Thank you. Moving on to standing committees, Rules and Government Relations. Counselor Derby.
Thank you, Mr. President. As of this evening, no report.
Okay, thank you.
We'll set a meeting soon to look at the administrative code change.
Okay, thank you. Finance, Counselor Cobb.
Thank you, Mr. President. The next meeting of Finance will be on October 12th, 2011, at 6:30 PM in the Conference Room Number One, just below us. The item on the agenda will be what was presented tonight concerning review of information setting the tax rate for 2012.
Thank you very much. And your port- Public Safety, Counselor Psychowski.
No report this evening.
Thank you. Mayoral appointments, Counselor Winnie.
Thank you. We met tonight, and on the two mayoral appointments of Jason Duda for the Licensing Board and Ronald Malouin on Industrial Finance Authority, both applicants were brought forth with a three to zero favorable vote for, to bring forward to City Council for appointment. So with that being said, we'd like to make the motion that Jason E. Duda be appointed to the Licensing Board with the term of expiration of June 4th, 2012, and that Ronald Malouin be appointed to the Industrial Finance Authority with the term of expiration of December 31st, 2014.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for the appointment of Jason Duda to the Licensing Board and Ronald Malouin to the Industrial Finance Board. Additional comments? Counselor Hagan?
Would it be possible to have a separate vote on each candidate? While I don't intend to oppose one of the appointments, I did want to abstain. I will defer to the recommendation of the appointments, but I feel I'd like to abstain on one of them.
The motion has to be separated.
Yeah, I mean, I have no problem separating it. If you want, withdraw the motion.
I'll withdraw the motion in a second.
Okay.
In a second.
And the second was withdrawn? Okay, so we'll just take them individually then?
First appointment, Jason E. Duda, Licensing Board, term of expiration, June 4th, 2012.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to second to appointment of Jason Duda to the Licensing Board. Any additional discussion? Counselor Hagan?
I attended the meeting tonight, and I appreciate Mr. Duda actually appeared personally and did answer the concerns of the board. And, you know, I do appreciate that. I just will abstain in the vote because I felt, you know, I just couldn't support him. But I didn't want to vote against the committee either because I think they did do their diligence in looking at it.
Okay, any additional comments? I was there too. I would have to say, you know, again, I was satisfied with Mr. Duda's responses, his involvement in municipal activities. And so after answering my questions, I will vote in favor of him. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain?
Aye.
One abstention. Okay, take, motion passes.
Okay, second nomination is Ronald Malouin, Industrial Finance Authority, expiration date of December 31st, 2014.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval of Ronald Malouin to the Industrial Finance Committee. Any additional discussions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion passes.
I do want to make the announcement that we have numerous boards with vacancies. We have vacancies on the Board of Health, Charity Fund Income Distribution Committee, Commission on Disability, Conservation Commission, Development Industrial Committee, ECA Plus, Fair Housing Committee, Housing Partnership Committee, Industrial Finance Authority, Manhand Rail Trail, National Sonic Pond Committee, Planning Board, Planning Board Associate Member, and Zoning Board of Appeals Associate Member. If anyone is interested in serving on any of these boards or committees, please contact City Hall or Mayor Tosner if you require any more information as to what your responsibilities and duties would be on any of these boards. That's it for my report, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you. Ordinance, Counselor Chattenoff.
No report tonight. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you. Property, Counselor Cobb.
Thank you, Mr. President. The next meeting of property will be October 17th, 2011, at 6:00 PM, 50 Payson Avenue, again in Conference Room Number One. The topic will be the request, review, and modify disposal requirements for 152, 154, Everett Street. That concludes, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. We have some new business. One, mayoral appointments, Counselor Winnie, just want to move that.
Move the mayoral appointments be sent down to Appointments Subcommittee?
Second. Okay, we have a motion to second to move the appointment of Burns Maxey to Appointments Committee. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion passes. We do have a bit of city business. We just need to approve the, how do I word this? The warrant for the November 8th city election. Do I have to read the whole warrant?
No.
Okay, so we have a, obviously, election coming up on November 8th, 2011, mentioning that up for election at the time will be a mayor for a term of, term of two years, four city councillors at large for a term of two years, five district city councillors for a term of two years, and six school committee members for a term of two years. The polling places will, as in the past, be White Brick Middle School for Precincts 1, 2, and 5, and Park Street, Precincts 3 and 4, the East Hampton High School. So just as part of approving this warrant for the elections, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Could I have a motion for the approval of the warrant for the election of November 8th?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to second for the approval of minutes, all those in, I mean, approval of the warrant. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Mr. President, I have a question. I just want to make the announcement that our next appointments meeting for this new appointment will be held on October 19th at 5:45 in Council Chambers.
Okay, so there will be appointments meeting at 5:45 on, I believe it's October 19th, in these chambers for that appointment.
Yes.
Thank you. We have some time until the opening of public hearings, and I believe we've caught up with routine business. So we'll just have to wait a few minutes. So we start on time for that.
AT&amp;T says 6:12. Trust him?
May I address this?
Yes. Just so that we don't have a lot of dead air time, I do want to mention that we've begun the toy program for this year. And so my assistant Karen and Personnel Director have been doing their shopping already. And we're very much interested in letting the citizens know that the program is going to be run again this year and that we always are seeking donations to help offset the cost of toys for children in the community that, whose families can't afford it. We expect that the demand is going to be much larger this year because of the economy. A lot of families are having difficulty just making ends meet with the basics that it require. And we think that there's going to be a big demand for Toys for Children this year. And so we're encouraging everyone to be involved in the program. We take donations of rolls of Scotch tape, and not even have to be the same brand, any kind of cellophane tape. New rolls of wrapping paper, and any kind of monetary donations. Donations can be sent by check to the City of East Hampton, to the Clerk's office, or to the Mayor's office, payable to the East Hampton Toy Fund. We have begun to stockpile toys in the, in what we'd like to call Santa's Workshop this time of year. And ECAT Television is going to be doing a little bit of a program on it to highlight it to the citizens of the community. But it's a wonderful program. We serve upwards of 250 to 300 children every year, and it takes about $15,000 or $18,000 to be able to run that program. So it's important that we raise the funds. We do have the funds available for this year's program, and so this year's fundraising really applies to being able to provide this next year for children in East Hampton. So we always encourage people to be involved, and we'll take your donations at any time.
Terrific. Thank you for the information. Okay, now.
I didn't quite get your very first.
Yeah, exactly. Okay, we have less than a minute. Okay, I think we're close enough for by time we-
Move that to public hearings.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for open the public hearings. We have quite a few today. We're going to go kind of in order of what they have here, saving the, let's go poll towards the last. So begin with some of the general ordinance amendments. Counselor Chattenoff?
Thank you, Mr. President. We have three positions that were considered. The ordinance Subcommittee met last week and met with the department heads and went through the three positions. If you have department heads here to answer any questions. And the ordinance Subcommittee voted three to zero in favor of the three positions. The Planning Department position basically is being funded out of current funding within the department. It's just a change of work details between, you know, internal organization. The computer position is a newly created position, and that is additional funding. The Parks Department position is an expansion of a current position, and the funding for the additional weeks in the program is going to be taken out of proceeds from programs that are being run by the Parks Department. So we did check on funding for those programs, and can answer more questions if there are any as we go along. I'd like to offer the first one, the Computer Technician position. We have Barry Small, the person in charge of our Systems, Computer Systems Department, to answer any questions if there are any.
Okay. Mr. Small, maybe you could just come up and just summarize a little bit what you expect this person to do and such.
Good evening, Barry Small, Systems Administrator. I've been here 14 years, and my department is pretty much, the responsibilities have doubled because of the ongoing technology. When we started, we had a basic network for our financial software in our Police Department. And I currently maintain two separate domains in two different buildings and offer occasional support for two other buildings. These networks consist of six servers, about 80 PCs and laptop computers, and about 25 printers and copiers. Originally, we had four software programs, and we now have eight software programs. We originally used a website that was donated to the city and was maintained privately. We now maintain our own website, and we keep it up to date constantly. We originally had five dial-up, about five dial-up internet connections when we started. And we now have network-wide internet access and email accounts for nearly all of the network users. And currently, the Massachusetts Broadband Institute has a fiber optic project that's coming through Western Massachusetts. And it's a large project, and the mayor and myself are the contacts for East Hampton. I often work a few hours on the weekends, and it's been more and more difficult to take time off. I take a day off or half-days off instead of weeks off because of coverage. And what concerns me is if I was out for medical reasons or any other unforeseen reasons, there would be no coverage in tech support for the departments. With the new position, a new person would help cover all the basic hardware and software duties, some of the, and some of the network responsibilities. And while the new person is working, I'd be able to assist in tech support, but also to be proactive in the equipment maintenance, software upgrades, and better configuration of the whole system. I'd be more available for projects and planning for future configuration of our networks, and be able to go to training and to attend meetings when needed, and to take a week off.
While you're at the podium, if I ask any councilors, have any questions for Mr. Small? Counselor Cobb, that's your hand.
Yes, just to be clear, you'll be actually representing the city, not actually the school itself? The school has their own?
Yes.
Okay. I do have a question for the Chair of the Committee later on.
Okay, anyone else questions for Mr. Small?
Barry, do you do any collaboration with the person in the schools? In other words, like, is there any way that, again, I know it's a separate entity within the city. Is there any way that you could collaborate with them? In other words, like, in the case of a crisis, either you help them or they help you.
We did it more often in the past, but the school department's pretty much in the same position I am. So they don't have much spare time either.
Okay, any additional questions for Mr. Small? Okay, not being seen. Thank you very much. I guess I'll open up to the public then, as first who would like to, anyone else would like to address the council concerning the creation of the position of a Computer Technician for IT Department? Okay, not being seen. Any other additional questions? Counselor Cobb, you had a question for us?
On this one, I didn't catch it. Please don't misunderstand my questioning. I think this is long overdue, this position. But I do have to ask if there's, if, because the other two are being funded by other means, if this represents an additional, so to say, operational cost if we decide to fund this position?
It was our understanding that that would be the case, that we were creating the position itself, and that funding would have to come forward before the position could be filled.
Okay, thank you.
Actually, I have a, oh, sorry, because, hey, I didn't see.
No, that's fine if you have a-
No, go ahead.
No, just in following Counselor Cobb's questioning, is there any, do we have a set figure about what this position would cost? And the other two, I mean, I know they're coming out of grants, but I think it's important for the public to have an understanding what the total cost to the city would be. Again, whether it's out of grants or whether it's out of new revenues, I mean, or existing revenues. I think it's important we get a total dollar figure of what it would cost the city.
Great, thanks. Mayor Tosner, would you like to address some of those questions first?
Well, yeah, I'm not so sure I'm going to be able to address it the way that you might ask. It's going to depend on the hours that we fill this position with. We're anticipating that it's going to be very part-time to begin with, 12 to 14 hours, something to that effect. It's a grade seven position. I think entry level on this position is about $16. You have the, you should have that information in front of you. And I'm guessing that, 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 I don't want to phrase it differently. I don't know if this position will get funded in a near-term budget or not. There is no money for it now. There's no one. It does not appear as though there will be funding in the current fiscal year to be able to fill this between now and June 30. Whether they'll be funding in the FY 12 budget or not is currently a matter of speculation because we don't really know what the FY, I'm sorry, the 13 budget. Because we don't really know what the 13 budget's going to look like until we know what state aid figures are. And we won't know that information, as you all know, until April or May of next year. So we needed to create the position in order to consider funding it. The Personnel Director and the System Administrator wanted to make sure that that creation was done in a timely fashion so that we had a chance to look at it. There are bits and pieces that I do of this, and a part of our overall transition plan is to take that, again, out of my office and try to create a staff position forward. So I would hope that within the next two years that we would be able to bring this position on board. But I don't know if that answers your question. And so, just so the council's assured, you'll know exactly what it costs when it gets proposed because it'll have to be in a budget that would be approved by you.
Counselor Psychowski.
Well, you know, I realize that most of these are necessary one way or the other. But the problem I'm having to vote on this issue is that we still close the municipal building, and we have people on short time. We're not open Friday. We have the employees on short time. And the thing of it is, we're already talking about creating positions, and we're not talking about getting the municipal offices open five days a week and bringing these people back full-time. So I am having a difficult problem realizing that this is justified. But the thing of it is, I don't know I can justify it when these other, when the municipal building is closed on Friday, and we have people on short time, they're not back to their, their full-time. So that's, I have a big problem with that. So I think moving along with this, I think I'm going to have to abstain from all three positions. Till we get, I mean, say if they were back full-time, I'd most likely be in favor of this, but not right now. I just can't, I just can't bring myself to do it because I don't think it's fair to the other employees downstairs.
One more, if nobody else wants to speak. I don't want to speak a second. I'll speak on all three because I don't want to make the same speech three times. So, and starting with the first one, I have a lot of respect for Mr. Small, and I think he's done a great job, and we have provided him with additional equipment. But a lot of what Counselor Psychowski is, what's troubling me is, again, we don't, we have two full-time positions in Public Safety that have gone unfilled. We have, again, the hours here. We've just raised the water rates in town. The same council turned down a cola for the retirees because we couldn't afford $60 a year per retiree, which was $5 a month. And again, in these times, I just don't feel I could support any of the three. And it's nothing to do with the people involved. I think, like Counselor Psychowski said, I think they're all worthwhile positions. And that's kind of why I asked Mr. Small about coverage from the school department because I do feel, I mean, a man should be able to go on vacation. I mean, I don't think that's an unreasonable request, or if he got sick, somebody could step in. And I'd even, you know, look into, you know, contracting out if we had to with a computer thing in an emergency. But again, just given the nature of the city budget, and, I mean, I think some of the, and again, the mayor can correct me if I'm wrong, but some of the school department and the city side of the budget were using one-time funding this time just to get through. And again, to add, and I know it's not large money in some regards, but, you know, even at $16 or $20 an hour, it is large money when you add it up over the course of a year. And as someone who spent a lot of time in the public sector, I know once you put a job in the pay plan, the job's going to stay. It's not something that, if we go to layoffs, you know, once it's there, we're going to own it. The city's going to own it. And I just wouldn't want to put it in there until we have proper funding for the rest of the city. So that's just my feeling.
Counselor Chattenoff?
Just like to be clear that we're creating the position within the pay plan. We're not funding it. And so this is nothing more than just creating the position, that the City Council still has another vote on any funding that might come forward later. I think we're-
Counselor Derby?
Okay, well, a couple things. You know, we're in tough economic times, there's no doubt. I think, you know, we are all aware of that, and we have our heightened awareness of that even. But the reason why I think that this one in particular is important is, you know, listening to how maxed out this position is already, and not having a backup for it with the infrastructure that we have in East Hampton that's been growing, that's been, that we've been putting money to add to, we're basically not, we're, you know, we're not supporting our investment that we've already made. And, you know, as far as contracting out, good luck contracting out for $16 an hour. You know, one medical emergency could cost more than this position for five years if we had to contract out in an emergency to get it done quickly. Because there's no way we're going to get IT specialists in here for $16 an hour, that's for sure. So I think we need to be looking forward and saying, well, how can we protect our investment? How can we do this in a way that makes sense? And as far as, you know, getting it on the playpan, playpan, I can't even talk, pay plan, and not having it, you know, it's, granted, we're not funding it, and if it's on the pay plan, it doesn't mean it's going to be filled. I mean, look at, you mentioned the Public Safety positions that aren't filled. Those are on the pay plan, and those aren't filled. You know, so when we have the resources to fill it, we will. And in an emergency, this is a position that would exist so we could have somebody in here for $16 an hour and not have to worry about, you know, subcontracting out for $50 an hour. You know, so just, to me, it makes fiscal sense to be prepared and look forward.
Anyone else? Counselor Burns, did you raise your hand?
The only thing I wanted to add, I absolutely agree with Counselor Derby, is that the only position that we would need to generate money for is the position of, for Barry's office. And I believe what they were, when we met, the figure that was suggested was about $14,000 a year. So it, which, you know, it's $14,000, but it's not a huge amount of money. And again, it's not anything until we actually have it that we can spend. And I think it's, it is about protecting our investment. The other two are already funded. John Mason from Parks and Recreation actually went through all the reasons that he felt it was necessary. I mean, that is incredible resource, our park. And he has someone now who's advertising what's going on there. They've made a lot more money. He said there's about 20% increase in the vehicle recreation, the swim income. They're making money. The only way for them to make more money and to generate more revenue is to be able to publicize it and to have help in that office. Without help, we're not going to be able to grow. We're not going to be able to expand. These are, these are basic needs that we have in each of these offices. They're operating on a, with a skeleton crew, with one person. Barry's been here for 14 years. Technology has exploded. It's impossible to think that we're going to be able to run these offices without more, without more people. So the only one that we're asking for any sort of allotment of money is this position. And that's not even until we can guarantee that- And that's not even until we can guarantee that we have a funding source for it. That's the only one.
Counselor Winnie.
I'm absolutely in favor of all three of these creations of, of positions. The last two, I feel, are very important in the fact that they will help to generate more income for the city, which will give us more of the opportunity to provide funding for these positions in the future. One is, one is for working with the community, working with businesses, to bring more businesses into town. We get more businesses into town, that's more tax money. The second one for, for the park, if the park is, is advertising and bringing more people in, then that's bringing more people into our businesses that are in the community. It's more, more people coming in and paying for the use of the park. And it's, it's all advertising. And the more people we get into East Hampton, the more money we're going to generate. The more people that eat in East Hampton, that come into East Hampton, we proved that with Bear Fest. We had so many people on the streets walking and visiting our, our local shops and restaurants and, and it just increased our economy. So that all, revenue, all of that creates tax money for us, for the tax base, and takes the tax burden off of the homeowners, so.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Hagan.
Just one quick, you know, I know I've spoke twice. I just want everyone to be clear, I, I agree with everything Counselor Burns said about it and Counselor Derby about these being very important positions. And I, I thought I said at the start, I, I just said, I think we have other important positions that we're not funding. And I know we're only saying that this first one is, is going to need new funding. But again, the, the planner position's going to be funded out of grants, who's to say the grants are around next year? The, the others coming out of revenues from other programs, again, which could be used. The Park and Rec, they have operated for years with a part-time person from what I read of Mr. Mason's proposal. Again, worthwhile, all three of them are very worthwhile positions. And in no way am I saying they're not worthwhile, I think in good times, I would support them a hundred percent. I just, again, we're, we, we turned down the cola people, we've raised people's water rates. Later tonight, we're going to start through the collective bargaining process to, to give raises or to improve contracts for our current workers. We have people, as, as Counselor Psychowski said, that still aren't making their full forty-hour salary, they've had reduced hours. And I just think that let's pay the bills we have today and, and certainly when things are better, I would be a hundred percent in support of all three of these positions.
Again. I saw Counselor Shatnov's answer.
This is not, we're not voting on any funding right now, let's like, just be clear, this is just on pay plan positions. We're not voting to fund anything right now, so.
Counselor Psychowski.
Well, I just want to say, Ray, I understand that, but the idea of it is, is, it's a principle to me. And like, further on, if times were good, I most likely would support these with no question. I know all these guys down there, I mean, they deserve a little help too. But the thing of it is, we have, we're lacking so much now, I just can't see creating more now that we get all caught up. And now, right, right today, there were several reports talking about in the middle of two thousand and twelve to the middle of two thousand and thirteen, we might be in a deep recession. So if the country goes, it's not going to be the country's fault, it's going to be the rest of the countries around us that are going to drive us into it. So if we fall into recession, you know, the revenues are going to fall off in the state. And you know what, what's going to happen, we'll be cutting back more than we're cutting back now. That's why, just, like I said.
Yeah, I understand your point. Any additional discussions after what's been said? So I, I guess we've sort of combined some of our discussion here, but I would probably should do them independently as motions. So Counselor Shatnov, do you, would you like to make a motion?
I move that the city council approve the classification for a computer technician.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion of second for the creation of the position of a, a computer technician. Any additional discussion of the counselors before a vote? Okay, I, I think I will be, excellent points brought up on all of these. For me, I see two of them potentially as income generating. I think sometimes you have to look forward to, to create some income. And the last one, I think, tech, technology is just expanding so much for us to keep current and to keep, actually even on some level, revenue positive. We need to be up to date on our IT. So I would certainly be voting in support of this position. But we have a motion and a second, Counselor Cobb.
I'll add one comment on this, this particular position. We need to be looking at using technology to actually improve our productivity. Have technology not working because we don't have a body doesn't improve our productivity, that actually helps it decline and gets people not to accept some of the new changes that are coming, coming in front of them. And I'm in full support of this, actually, it's one of those things that I personally feel that it's about time, it's something that, a position we should have had years ago. And as, even just for desktop support, there's, there's enough machines, equipment, software and server technology out there now to actually totally justify this. And I agree with Counselor Derby that the protection of, of assets and the implementation of potential improvements in product, productivity, provide services to help us move towards reopening on, on Fridays, that this is one of those positions that may seem like it's going to cost us money, but in event, it'll probably help lower some of our costs. So I speak in favor of this motion. Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Hagan.
Just one quick thing I'd like to ask Counselor Shatnov or somebody that was on the, under Mr. Small's thing, it, it talked about emergencies and also increase in system administrators' hours. Has he been, is Mr. Small back on forty hours or is he, is he still on reduced? I, I don't know, I knew there was a talk at some point he was going to go back.
We have a motion of second on the table.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Unless I'm also, is that important enough that?
No, no, that's, just, I, I thought it was of my understanding that he was back on, on full-time, so.
It's my understanding he wasn't back on forty, but that he was.
Working much more.
I, I realize he puts in forty, I'm not saying, I bet, I bet what he's getting paid for is.
He's working the hours, yeah, I don't know what he's.
He's being paid the same as everybody else.
Okay, any additional discussions on this motion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Abstaining?
Abstain.
Okay.
One no, one abstain.
Motion passes. Move on to the Assistant Planner, did you want any more introduction, should we call the, the city planner up, Counselor?
Yeah, I think we should call the city planner up. This position is a combination of positions that are already in existence, so I'd like to let Stuart speak to it. Again, the subcommittee voted three to zero in favor of this.
Good evening, Stuart Beckley, City Planner. Just upfront, want to clarify one point that I've heard discussed so far tonight is that the proposed position for this year is funded out of city appropriation. It's not funded out of either grants or other revenues. And as Counselor Shatnov said, it is a combination, the funding is coming from funds that previously funded the departmental clerk and the city share of the department's, the city's grant coordinator. Both, both those, the people in those positions have left, creating this opportunity to create an assistant planner position. As Counselor Winnie mentioned, we hope that the prime function of this position will be to focus on economic development, working with the Economic Development Commission as well as the Regional Economic Development Council. This will allow the city to have a place at the regional table by having a, a staff person associated with economic development. I guess sadly, in, I figure this should be, with available funds, we should be able to fund fifteen or sixteen hours. We cannot completely dedicate it to economic development because there is some administrative work that needs to be done that was previous to that, both the grants person and the clerical person. But that is hopefully the key focus and will take up some of the work with the city's committees that the department takes care of now.
So is it, is it fair to say that this is actually on some level revenue neutral because it's not, it's not increasing funds that's fine that previously exists that we had funded in the past for those two different positions?
Within this year's fiscal budget, that is correct.
Any additional, Counselor Cobb?
The, I'm a little perplexed here, so bear, bear with me. It sounds like you're actually currently, you're in the planning department, two of your other people have left?
Correct, we still have Susan Peña, who is the block grant project manager and is focusing on the community development block grant. But other than that, yes.
Okay, the, the fallout then is, even with this position, does that represent service-wise a reduction in labor hours?
Yes, probably going from nineteen to sixteen.
Okay, and the next one is, one of the things I personally would not like to see is someone getting unfair advantage if we seek to fund this position, that it is advertised and, and we go through that process. That's the intent, if it is funded.
That is always the intent.
Thank you.
Counselor Derby.
Mr. Beckley, just, correct me if I'm wrong, is this, one of the responsibilities of this new person going to be some outreach to businesses potentially interested in coming to East Hampton?
Yes, working with the Development and Industrial Commission, that would be expected, yes.
Any additional comments? Okay, if there's any, thank you very much, Stuart. Anyone else from the public who'd like to address the council concerning the creation of assistant planner in the planning department? Okay, not being seen, Counselor Shatnov, I can entertain a motion if you would like then.
I move that the city council approve the position of assistant planner in the planning department, classification of the position as a grade nine in the pay grade plan.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion of second to approve the creation of assistant planner in the planning department. Any additional discussion, Counselor Rist?
I can't speak more highly of, this is a long time coming and a great idea to make it a development position, especially to attract business. We're having a debate now in the current, current campaign about whether we're business-friendly. This is a way to, for the future progress of our ability to attract business. If, if I were the mayor, I would argue that sixteen hours is hardly enough time and I would look to fund it fully. Because if we can attract more business, we attract more people, we attract more tax revenue, it'd pay for itself. So I am happy to see this position created and, and hope it would be expanded, probably before many others. But that's just my opinion and I'm not ever going to be mayor, so that's.
Any additional comments, Counselor Psychowski?
My objectives are the same as above, but I've followed these issues about bringing business into this town for maybe thirty years, right? And one of the things that has to be done, the whole zoning book has to be addressed and a special permit has to be addressed. These are the blockers, we have been regressing for the last two years and we're still regressing. So whether this position will do any good or not, I, but I mean, I will either abstain or again on this vote because I believe that we should be working to bring the rest of the employees back full-time before we do new positions.
Okay, additional comments, Counselor Hagan?
Again, I, like I said, on the computer job, I think this is a very, very good position, one I would support in better times. But again, for the reasons that I'm not going to go back through them, I wouldn't support it currently.
Additional comments? Okay, we have a motion of second on the table, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No, two, no, and abstained.
Two no's or abstentions?
No, I'll go with all this stuff.
Okay.
That's a difference, same thing, a no voter and abstention is the same difference.
It isn't, but that's.
I know. I can say abstention.
Okay, thank you. Moving on, Counselor Shatnov, we're on to the Parks and Recreation Department then.
Okay, this, the Parks and Rec Director is here to answer any questions. This is moving a position that was normally a seasonal position, about thirty weeks, and add it to a, to an annual position.
Well, okay, Mr. Mason here from the Park Recs would like to just fill us in on this position, please.
I've never met this man. Yes. If I may, I have some handouts regarding expenses and revenues on the, that we anticipate for the upcoming year.
Thank you.
And also two thousand and thirteen.
As it's noted, for two thousand and twelve, no additional funds from the city will be used to offset the cost for this position increase. Two thousand and thirteen, we anticipate a four thousand, three hundred and twenty dollar increase. But if you look at our two thousand and eleven income results, we hear about the economy being down. The Park and Recreation Department, we have seen an increase in our revenues. We have developed a marketing strategy to get more people in the park, vehicle fees, using the pool, pavilion incomes, things that can offset the cost of this position and give back, this is money that we return back to the city. This is not the programming money which we would use to offset the cost of this position. This is additional revenues that we return to the city. So this is on top of what we've done in the past. The last two years, our department has underwritten the cost for a full-time park person at no cost to the city. So when that position was cut, we went out, researched and found grant funding to create a position. We pay for that position and it hit with no tax burden. We are in negotiations to do that again, for a part-time position to be in the park, working in maintenance as well, with no additional cost on the city. We are looking at revenue sources, we're looking at grants, we're looking at, in these positions, you know, if, if they do go away with grant dollars, they go away. But we feel that we need them, we're aggressively attracting dollars to the park and we're working hard to maintain them. Also, this position has helped develop a lot of marketing tools. We have Pumpkin Fest coming up in the park, October twenty-third, that's this first annual. We're going to have a lighting of the pumpkins and do a walk and a judging and a, and a thing like that for the community. I believe I handed these out to the city council beginning of the year, but, you know, our brochures, these, these haven't been redone in twenty-seven years. We took it upon ourselves last year to redo it. This coming year, we're putting out new marketing material with the work of all departments, youth organizations, school departments, for timelines for the community, so they would have a booklet, know when things are coming around. So we're, we're looking outside the box. This position also works for the tree warden, cemetery departments and Parks and Rec. And as you've seen of everything in the, in the papers with tree warden, we get, you know, ten to fifteen calls a day just in tree warding alone, never mind cemetery issues that come up on a daily basis as well. So this position's very important to the department as we continue to grow and we definitely are, are not going to be a tax burden to increase this position.
Thank you, any questions for Mr. Mason, well, Counselor Cobb?
Just on, on the same lines, the current position is, and I'm remiss at this, I know you provided this information, I just don't have it in front of me, so I apologize. The current position that is, is doing this is, what step and what title at this point?
It's no step, it's hourly. It's not, it's not on the pay plan, that's why we're, we're moving it to the pay plan. It's thirty-hour position, we're remaining at thirty hours.
Twelve bucks a night.
Is the current rate, that's correct.
And the title of the position?
That, it's clerk, I believe.
Principal clerk.
Principal clerk.
Sorry, principal clerk, thank you.
Any additional questions for Mr. Mason? Okay, thank you very much. Does anyone here from the public who would like to address the council concerning the creation of this position, please come to the podium? Okay, not being seen, Counselor Shatnov, I'd entertain a motion.
I move that the city council approve the addition of the position of principal clerk in the Parks and Recreation Department, classify the position as grade five.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion of second for the creation of the principal clerk in the Parks and Recreation Department, any additional comments? Same?
Well, I want to give everyone their equal due. Again, with Mr. Mason's presentation, I think it's a very worthwhile position, I'd love to support it. I just think that we have to take care of what we have first and certainly in better times, I would be more, you know, definitely something I would support. But at this time, I couldn't, couldn't, can't feel, can't support.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I, I was impressed with his short little presentation there about the generation, income generation. You know, I think it's tough, but it's sometimes you have to look forward to make that money. And, you know, and I'm really excited about his enthusiasm and ideas and his good work, so I would certainly be in support of this position. Counselor.
One other consideration.
Counselor Shatnov first.
Oh, I'm sorry, one other consideration is that, that with the downturn in the economy and people are forced to stay closer to home and whatever, the, the needs and, and demand. to stay closer to home and whatever, the needs and demands of the local parks are higher than in times where people had, would have more money to spend and whatever, so the strain on our, on our parks and the staff are going to increase rather than decrease in this situation and I think that's shown by, by the increase in usage and fee generation that's occurred. So, I mean, it's a good value for people and it provides services that are necessary to our community.
Right, Counsel Psychoski?
Well, if you didn't jump so far ahead so fast, I was just going to say ditto to what Dan Hagan said because it's just about the same thing, so.
Okay.
If times were better and we had the revenue, no problem, but right now, with the rest of them, like I said before, the rest of them downstairs being on short time and the rest of it, that's my priority to get those people back to full, full time and I just can't support it at this time. But, I mean, it's justified, but, I mean, I just can't do it.
Yeah. I know, I see what you're saying, I mean, for me, I think all three of these positions probably wouldn't bring, you know, one and a half people back and, you know, I think many of them are neutral funded or funded from grants and I think they have certainly a potential for generating income, which hopefully will get us back towards a place where opening on Friday again is more of a viable alternative, but I completely understand what you're saying. Counsel Derby?
I just want to say, you know, as someone who spends, I feel like, most of my free time in East Hampton parks, they do a great job maintaining the parks and, you know, the soccer teams that come from other towns remark it, what an amazing soccer fields we have and, you know, how beautiful they are and baseball teams from all over Hampshire County come and play baseball and softball at our fields and, you know, I think it's, our rec department has been so underfunded historically, I mean, if you look at their, their building, which is, I don't even know if it's inhabitable right now, you know, they could, they deserve to have a little extra help and it's not just Parks and Rec, it's cemeteries and it's the tree warden and we're talking about, you know, just getting somebody who's funded in there to help out, I think it's a no-brainer.
Okay, thank you, any additional, Counsel Burns?
I feel that how we're going to do economically going forward is going to depend on how we invest in our resources right now and what we have here right now. We have an amazing resource with Nashuanic Pond and I, my hat's off to, to John Mason and I feel like he's infused the department with energy, I love what they're doing, I love that there's a first annual pumpkin contest and the posters and the movie night and that is exactly how that park should be used and it's just, it's an incredible thing that we have that right in town. And let's give it, let's, let's let him do the work that he wants to do by funding this position, well, we don't even need to fund the position, it's already funded, so let's, let's give him this position, he's asking for it, he needs to be able to do the work that, that he was hired to do and, you know, let's, let's invest in the future, let's not be afraid, let's invest in the future.
Counsel Psychoski?
Well, we're talking about it, why don't we give a little credit to all the people that built the soccer fields and the little league fields and the rest of it, all those groups, they're the ones that, and the Rotary Club for building a new pavilion and this and that, I mean, and the Lions Club for building a pool, I mean, we're fortunate in this town that we had the service clubs that did all the work because there was never town funding for them.
Yeah, we've been fortunate with the community service in this city for sure. Okay, so we have a motion, a second, any additional comments? Okay, not being seen, all those in favor of the creation of the Parks Rec position, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
Abstaining?
Motion passed.
Okay, yeah, I think what we did, I mean, this, that actually took longer than I expected to get to those positions, so why don't we move to the poll location, continuation of the public hearing, because I think most of the public here are here for that, so we will begin that now. I don't know, Counsel Shashna, if you want to briefly introduce, I mean, it's nothing...
Thank you, President, we'd just like to continue this public hearing and Counsel Hagan did the legwork in the last two weeks to try to bring this to a successful resolution and get him in Florida.
Just a couple of quick comments and I know Western Mass has a PowerPoint that they want to present and I'm sure maybe some of the residents might want to comment. Over the last two weeks, I just wanted to thank several parties that assisted me, it wasn't all my own work in trying to come up with an alternative design, I did have conversation with the Department of Public Utilities, Senator Knappick called me personally, I got a couple of calls from Representative Skibek's office, I checked in with the city solicitor and also the president of Western Mass was, gave me a personal audience and a phone call. He also sent a letter to the city council, which you all should have. As a result of the meeting with President Clark, he proposed an alternative cabling system for the city called fiberglass bracket crossarms. I think Western Mass will show you what it is, the system is basically thirty, there's two different sizes, but he said he would support giving us a thirty-six inch wide bracket, so it would only go eighteen inches into the forest side of the road, helping with the canopy, obviously not quite as, as, as well as the spacer might have, but certainly what I think is a reasonable compromise from a four-foot, a four-foot arm, crossarm that would go into the woods, it would only be eighteen inches going into the woods. This would be for the whole Clark Lane section that's in the wood area. If we go along with this proposal, there will be no need to redesign, he said it could be put on the existing pole location, so it's a matter of us just being able to go with the design as it, as it is. And I know Western Mass is here to explain the design, I'll let them give any technical things that the counselors might have questions, they also stated that they'd stick with the forty-inch poles, I believe, excuse me, forty-foot poles, not forty-inch poles, forty-foot poles.
It's my touch the wires.
And also Calvin there, Arbus, was present at the meeting with President Clark and he said that they would do the double trimming, the trimming when the poles went in and again, after the poles are set, he would then trim the rest of the canopy and try to make it as the best trimming job or the least exclusive trimming job that he could, given their safety standards. Again, I don't want to take their time because they're the experts on it, but...
Thank you, so Mr. Clark, if you'd like to begin your presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, not to be confused with the other Mr. Clark who is the president and interestingly, we both spell our name with an E on the end and Clark Lane, we notice is a miss and not having an E. Try to be quick, I think we do have an acceptable, or I'm hopeful that we have an acceptable solution and it is fiberglass bracket construction used by our sister utility, Public Service in New Hampshire. I will say it is still not our preferred method of construction because we feel we will pay a bit of a reliability penalty by having the conductors closer together, but I want to emphasize in the interest of moving the project along, we would be accepting of utilizing this fiberglass bracket construction. We had started out suggesting forty-five foot poles or proposing forty-five foot poles with our crossarms, the request of a number of parties here to install Hendrix was considered. We came back with, instead of that, let's shorten the poles to forty feet and the impact of shortening the poles to forty feet essentially means that in virtually every area except the last span of wire here, the nature of construction would have no impact on the amount of tree removal or trimming in this area, but it would, the nature of construction from here to here would still be impact, would still have an impact on the tree trimming. And what we were proposing is to maximize the minimization of the tree trimming, would you consider the fiberglass brackets? And for simplicity's sake, we were proposing to install the fiberglass brackets, and I'll show you the pictures next, essentially the entire length. We have, we have construction constraints relative to the fiberglass brackets in that they can't be used on what are called corner poles and those corner poles, and I want to emphasize, this is conceptual engineering, it hasn't been fully engineered, but certainly the concept of what I'm saying is valid, but on tentatively this pole, this pole, this pole and this pole, we would still need a short crossarm because the, just the, the ability of the fiberglass bracket to withstand the additional forces of the corner require that the fiberglass bracket wouldn't work, but we can put in a six-foot arm, which would be three feet on each side in, in those areas and that would enable us to utilize the fiberglass bracket construction throughout. And again, I just want to emphasize again, in this area, the nature of the construction, once we've gone to the forty-foot pole, once we're at the forty-foot pole, the nature of the construction on top of the pole has no impact on the amount of trimming and that is due to the fact that, that the primary trimming in that area is actually tree removal, there would be hazard trees that regardless of the construction, we'd want to remove. So that's the layout, these are the construction types and again, what we had originally proposed was the normal ten-foot crossarm with the, the conductors at their maximum spacing. What had been proposed in between was spacer cable or Hendrix construction, heavier wire in a, with a heavy steel messenger that holds brackets like this and heavier wire for spacer construction on the corners, we would have, we would have used that if we were going with Hendrix construction. The advantage here is, at least in concept, is on the field or the wood side, there's no protrusion of facilities from the pole. What we are proposing in tonight is, instead of the crossarms, we would use a, again, this fiberglass bracket construction used by our sister utility in New Hampshire, it's a fiberglass bracket, the wires are much closer together, this is a total of a thirty-six inch arm, so we have an eighteen inch protrusion on each side of the pole. So it, it doesn't, it, here you have no protrusion, here we're saying, instead of a five-foot protrusion, hoping it would be acceptable to have an eighteen inch protrusion. And again, in, except for that initial section off of Torrey Street, none of this has an impact on how much of the tree gets removed. The corner pole, the construction that I talked about would involve not the full-length crossarms, but we would go with a, on those corner poles, a six-foot crossarm, slightly less, I think it's five and a half feet, to, just for the structural integrity of the pole top, those would be required in a couple of corner pole locations. Again, we've talked about the Hendrix construction, the other, the other point that we talked about here is that if we, if we were to go to this, an initial assessment is that it would require two additional poles because the span lengths would have to be shortened. If we put in those two additional poles in the areas where we think they would be required, that would require the removal, we believe, of a couple of trees in addition to what already needs to be done and some more trimming. This again is the construction that we're proposing tonight and I would entertain any questions.
Okay, for the council first, Mr. Taff, Counsel Rist?
Rist.
Mr. Clark, thank you for this compromise, I think it's a good one. Just to clarify, the original proposal required tree removal, certain amount of trees to be taken down. Nothing that we've ever discussed changed that except what you just said, the spacer or Hendrix cable might require even more trees taken down because you've had to add more poles because of the span length with a heavier cable requires more poles, therefore more trees taken down. That's, that's a fact.
Yes, yes.
So the amount of trees taken down never was in question, except maybe increasing, but not decreasing if we went to the Hendrix, it never was going to go down, full trees.
That, that, I, I think that is correct, Hendrix would, Hendrix would require additional poles and therefore we believe a couple more trees.
So where they put a pole and they have to take trees down, that's always been the case. The case has always been about how much canopy or branches of trees above the poles and around the poles.
Yes.
When we reduced the pole to forty feet, you've just stated that except for near the end of the Clark, I forget the...
Yes, Torrey.
The Clark, what is this, Torrey, the Clark to Torrey Lane intersection, you would not need to take much canopy down, even if you stayed with the full, you would still, because you lowered it, the amount of canopy wouldn't be affected. You said that just now.
From, from this point, this way, the type of construction would not impact the amount of, would not impact the canopy.
Right.
Once we're at the forty-foot level.
So this even is a help, even this compromise won't necessarily mean less canopy in that section, but it's a good compromise anyway.
Yes.
But we're still talking about, but you'll take less canopy down in that area because of this. I just want to make sure, we're talking about tree branches is what we're talking about in the sense of the look of the poles above, that's all we're talking about.
Where our offer of the...
Compromise.
Fiberglass would reduce trimming is in this area.
Okay.
The fiberglass in this area would not have an impact relative to Hendrix or relative to crossarms relative to trimming.
Okay, so finally, what I've heard from Mr...
But we're willing to do the fiberglass the entire length.
Right, and finally, what I heard from Mr. Hagan, just so that you can confirm it, there is no redesign necessary, no delay in this project if it passes tonight because of this change.
It should not be significant, I want to be careful not to box ourselves in, we have not done a complete engineering redesign, which should not be, we don't believe it will be significant because the pole locations stay as they are. The availability of the material, because it's not generally used in Western Mass Electric Company, we need to verify, we have no reason to think that it would cause any significant change in the timeframe relative to the project's need for...
So you're fair to say, you're pretty sure it wouldn't be a significant delay if it was?
Yes.
Okay, that's enough, thank you, Mr. President.
Counsel Hagan?
Just one area of Mr. Doug Clark. Yes. I think it's pole fourteen, on the very end to the right, yeah, right there. Yes. That particular property owner is probably the most impacted because there is a house there and there's going to be some new poles on her property. And I know with the ordinance committee and Counsel Shashna, there was talk of an alley arm and I, if I understood what President Clark was saying the other day and why he wanted to put or agreed to put the fiberglass through the whole thing, is he thought aesthetically it would look better with one type of poles rather than switching back and forth. But that one spot there, I, I think the conversation was, if I have, if I remember it, was that we would, or your company would go back or your arborist, Ms. Calvin, your arborist would go back and talk to the property owner and offer her either the alley arm or this particular fiberglass, whichever she felt would be most suitable for her particular trees, I just wanted to make sure I had that.
That is correct, whatever is most acceptable here and here relative to the fiberglass or the short crossarm or the alley arms and there are pros and cons with each. The alley arms frankly require heavier anchors and down guys further away from the base of the pole as opposed to the fiberglass, but whatever Calvin and I think it's Mrs. Ritter, Ritter, we would be willing to install there.
Thank you.
Additional questions for Mr. Clark? So we don't, we're not really sort of up for debate, so I think, Mr. Taff, obviously you can speak, but we don't sort of have a scenario of back and forth between the people at the podium. So any more questions for Mr. Clark then? No, is there anyone else from your team? Is there anyone else from your team who you would think would like to speak or needs to say anything?
Only to answer questions if I'm unable to answer them.
Mr. Taft, then your, please, thank you.
A couple of things I'd like to comment on first.
I'm sorry, just your name and address for our record.
My name is Norman Taft. I thought I generated frequent flyer miles here.
Yes, okay.
Two oh nine Loudville Road, resident, property owner, and a ratepayer of Western Mass Electric Company. Point of correction, I do my due diligence too, and I do additional research. I've talked with Myman Utility LLC. I've asked them what the maximum span lengths that are recommended for the equivalent of Warnott, Warnott spacer cable. I think the recommended plan that, on the wire size, initially called for Warnott tree wire, so I would imagine if spacer cable had been used, they would use the equivalent of Warnott spacer cable. I'm told that the maximum, the maximum length is two hundred feet. Now, none of the pole spans up here are two hundred feet. They're generally one fifty, and the maximum down by Mrs. Ritter's is one eighty-five. So, again, the folks who manufacture, engineer, and sell Hendrix wire say that basically you can, the existing plan could have utilized spacer cable. Now, along the lines of spacer cable, in talking with Myman Utility LLC of New Hampshire, they told me that Northeast Utilities, contrary to what we've heard before, is, has made a lot of potential sales and is using it around their system, in New Hampshire, in Massachusetts, in Connecticut. I, I learned from them that Western Mass Electric has extended a double circuit from New Ashfield, from Lansbury, from Lansbury to New Ashford up for the windmills up just south of Williamstown. So, there seems to be kind of a contradiction in what, what's going on. I appreciate what Mr. Clark is saying, but in the town of Hadley, right there, just a little bit east of your office, where there used to be flat construction, there is, in front of Hopkins Academy, there's now spacer cable. On a, on a country road where there's third-generation trees, mostly red maple, on Mill Valley Road heading towards Mill Valley, amers the spacer cable where flat construction probably could have been used. So, it seems like Hadley gets preferential treatment and we're on the shot into the stick. But that, that being said, I didn't come here to fight. I believe that the, the plan that Mr. Clark, the gentleman with the good looks and the persuasive, persuasive personality and, and charm, has made a good point. And generally, based on what I'm seeing, I support, I support their proposal. I don't want to stand in the way. But one of the things that bothers me greatly is, as I've sat here and I've attended a lot of meetings, both in the field and elsewhere, an incredible amount of misinformation, half-truths and exaggerations. Case in point, when I looked at, when I looked at some additional information on cost, on cost per mile, one of the interesting things that kind of comes up is that with tree wire, the average cost per mile in the United States is a hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. With, with spacer cable, it's one thirty-eight. With open wire, it's around one twenty-seven. Now, it can vary from region to region, area to area. We were talking about twenty-eight hundredths of a, of a, point two eight hundredths of a mile. In other words, fourteen hundred and fifty-two feet from Torrey Street down to residence number eighteen, Clark Lane. My, my point is that this could have been done. You know, there's, this precedent, precedent has been set elsewhere in other towns where they use spacer cable. They have elected to, not to do that. And it's, I find it mind-blowing that, that they're willing to, you know, after all this length of time, to do something that is, is, makes it a little less intrusive. But what I haven't heard is, what's the modification going to be on the tree trimming? Are we still talking about the fifteen, fifteen, eight, ten that they talked about? Furthermore, I'm concerned with Ms. Ritter at twenty-two Clark Lane and whether the trees in front of her house, which are healthy trees, can be spared. She's conveyed to me her concern with maintaining the shield and the screening that she has in front of it. I, I feel that based on some of the clearance requirements, that, that location, you know, if Mr. Leighton is able to show, show some discipline and exercise a greater deal of care, that maybe, that, maybe that location could be minimized. I hope that's the case. But by and large, by and large, I look at, I look at the, the cost of spacer cable, open wire, tree wire, and what I, when I, when I factored in the twenty-eight thousand on the, the twenty, the point two eight tenths of a mile, twenty, a little over a quarter of a mile into those costs, average cost figures that I gave you, one of the things I came up with was a cost differential of no more than six to seven thousand dollars versus bare wire with the tree wire even being more expensive than the spacer cable. But I understand there are some variations. But what I heard, what I heard, the project manager from Borrego say to, say to us at one point on multiple occasions that he didn't want to eat fifty to sixty thousand dollars over and above the cost of what was proposed. And I, I looked at that at the time and I said, where the devil is that coming from? And what he, what he has received just doesn't stand up to scrutiny. For, for folks who do their research, do their due diligence, they will find the answers. And, and the, the issues before city council, whether it be this time, win, lose, or draw, I didn't expect to take your sword and surrender tonight. But regardless of, regardless of that, I appreciate your willingness, Western Mass' willingness to strike some middle ground. We didn't push the underground, we compromised. You caught us in a magnanimous mood. But the bottom, the bottom line, the bottom line is, the lessons learned here is that there were folks here, Dan Hagan and Andrea Burns, who I challenged to do due diligence. I made assertions, I backed, I backed it up with paperwork. Andrea did her due diligence, she went beyond the community. Others chose not to. I also want to express in no uncertain terms my, my gratitude to Dan Hagan, who deserves a great deal of admiration because unlike sometimes what we think of as the fallacy and the, of the folks in Washington who bring their own personal agendas to a meeting, he listens, he's objective, he asks questions, and that's what I'd ask of all you. And in the future, when, when another opportunity comes, maybe when a utility comes knocking on your door or down your street, I hope you will hold Western Mass to a, to a high standard and not have, not have the safety thing be thrown up in your face and be ready to surrender. Ask questions, do your due diligence, ask questions and get answers, but don't accept, don't be ready to, to rub a stamp. With that, I conclude my commentary.
Great, thank you very much. Is there anyone from the public? I know a lot of this was discussed last council meeting for the public hearing, but any, you know, butters or who would like to make a brief comment in addition to the new, new setup? Please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Okay, no one's seen, we can take a motion. Counselor Shartnoff.
I have a motion to read and then there's a friendly amendment to ensure that the possibility of, of a, an alley arm or, or the fiberglass brackets could be used at that one location there that Counselor Hagan spoke of earlier. I move that city council approve the placement of six jointly-owned poles on Oliver Street, seven jointly-owned poles, solely-owned poles on Clark Lane, and two own pole, jointly-owned poles on Torrey Street in accordance with the submitted petition and plan marked number six A one-two-zero-three-one-six with the following wording to be utilized in, in the approval. Verizon, New England, Inc., and Western Massachusetts Electric Company shall reserve the space for one cross-arm at suitable position or point on the pole for fire, police, telephone, telegraph, and signal wires belonging to the municipality and use exclusively for municipal purposes. And the following agreed-upon conditions, poles will not be greater than forty feet above the ground, tree trimming will be done in multiple stages to minimize as much as possible the reduction of tree canopy whenever appropriate, alley-type arms, armed construction will be used to further reduce the impact to trees.
Grab a second for that, please.
Second.
Okay, we motion a second. Counselor Hagan, if you want.
Yes, just I'd like to make a friendly amendment, and I won't reread the whole motion because my friendly amendment is only on the, the final line to amend it to say whenever appropriate, alley arms and fiberglass bracket cross-arms will be used to further reduce the impact to trees.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second for the, just read amendment by Counselor Hagan. Any additional discussion on that amendment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion passes. Now, back to the main motion that's already been seconded. Any additional discussion on the main motion? Counselor Cobb.
What I'd like to state is, is to the gentleman here is that, yes, I did do some due diligence. Counselor Hagan can attest that early on I provided him some Hendrix information from my experience facilities. Counselor Byrne can attest that I had a long discussion with her about actually what the system looks like and actually suggested to her that she contact some linesmen, supported that, that ideal. I also have in front of me the actual lease agreement because I wanted to review that to see what leverage we, we could, we could apply for this. So, there was, there's a lot that goes on that you might not see, that a lot of us have participated in to try to make this a good project for the city. And I, I just wanted to make sure that this was a team effort and not solely just an individual effort, but I want to commend Counselor Hagan especially for taking the bull by the horns and, and carrying through on all the information he had.
Here, here.
Counselor Rist.
That'll take a ball.
I would like to thank all of the residents, Mr. Taft especially, for their efforts here because without them, this compromise wouldn't have happened. Although I take objection to the notice, notion that we don't do our due diligence necessarily, there are many of us who do more, and I certainly would like to point to Counselor Burns as one of those counselors that go beyond the, the necessary. This has been, to me, a debate about engineering at times when it should be a debate about what it was initially, whether there would be and how much impact on the tree, the amount of trees taken down and the canopy. And I think the compromise, I really thank Wemco for coming up with this compromise, and if not for the efforts of the neighbors, Mr. Taft and Mr. Hagan, that might not happen. So, I applaud the involvement and I wish all of our citizens would do so. But I wanted to make the comment, once again, that this particular pole location, which we vote on quite often, and this particular engineering project is about the installation of solar energy, which directly impacts the citizens and their taxpayers by providing East Hampton with which, what is estimated at one hundred thousand dollars of property tax, I'm sorry, of property tax savings in that we can use funding, which we would normally have to pay for electrical use, for something else such as opening the building, new police and fire, maybe paying for a full-time community development planner position. This is real money, which is why any delay, I would have opposed vehemently, and I'm happy to hear there's no delay because this will directly affect the taxpayers and help our city provide more services or bring back services we've had to cut. So, I'm very thankful that this has resolved itself. Thank you very much, and thank you to everybody else.
Any additional comments from the council? Counselor Burns.
I'd like to echo a lot of, some of the things that Counselor Rist mentioned. I think this is why it's so important that residents get involved with the political process. As he said, this outcome probably would not be what it is without the residents. And it shows you, when you put your back into something, when you get behind something, the impact that you have on the council as well as, as the entities that we're working with because we're your liaisons. And so, I really commend you for the work that you've done and bringing us, educating us about the things that we need to be educated about. Also, wanted to thank Western Mass Electric for being willing to, both Mr. Clarks for being willing to compromise and take this seriously and really try to work with us to, to make this have a, a good outcome. And especially to Counselor Hagan because you went above and beyond and you worked really hard on this, and again, this would not have happened without your work and without you asking for that extra and pushing and persevering, and that's, that's really, really important. Again, if you don't persevere, it doesn't change and nothing, they're not going to, they're not going to, if we don't ask for it, they're not going to do it. And we asked, and you asked, so I really appreciate your work. Very well done.
Thank you. Counselor Hagan.
Again, just so.
Hagan Premier.
Just to reiterate, I didn't do all this work alone, and I know I mentioned it, but the Department of Public Utilities was helpful to me these past couple of weeks. Senator Knappick, Representative Skybix Office, the Western Mass President and the city solicitor all weighed in to me, and I appreciated all their, you know, comments, support, you know, guidance. And I thank the council for giving me the two-week window to, to, to complete it, and especially I want to thank the residents. I know it's tough to come out, you know, we choose it by choice to come out night after night to these meetings, but they've stuck through the whole process and I do appreciate the residents and thank them.
Counselor Derby.
Well, I'm hoping this is a win-win. I think it's a, it's a win for the city to, to have this project move forward and hoping that the neighbors feel comfortable with this. And, you know, as, as far as addressing the due diligence issue, you know, I, I feel that we all do due diligence and, and nobody really keeps track of what we're actually doing, so nobody really knows. But, you know, doing your due diligence doesn't always lead you to the same conclusion as the person that you are disagreeing with. And I think sometimes it's okay to agree to disagree, and sometimes your due diligence leads you to another place. And for me, when I did my cost-benefit analysis in this project from the very beginning, you know, I didn't see the, it didn't make sense to me to kill the project or to, to delay the project, you know, to change the engineering. And even still, it doesn't, but I think this is a good compromise. And so, Dan, thanks very much for, for doing, you know, facilitating this, and I'm hoping that this is going to be a win-win for everybody. So, thanks.
Any additional comments? Okay, we already have a second, a motion and a second, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Stained?
unanimous. Thank you.
Right. Thank you very much. I give the neighbors everyone a few minutes just to leave, so that.
Everybody campaigning for office more.
Thanks for going there. It's okay.
We have to continue our meeting. Ladies and gentlemen, we have to continue our meeting. If you could meet out in the back there, it'd be better.
Thank you. Okay. Counselor Psychowski's in there.
Where'd he go? The bathroom? We didn't have it. Huh? We didn't, we didn't.
You only said a few minutes.
Did we say, we, did we have any research?
Okay, well, so, we'll continue on now, some of our financial matters. So, Counselor Cobb, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. To begin me, before I start the items on the public hearing, what I'd like to do, because to give you an idea of how we're going to run this tonight, because I tried to spread the knowledge here a little bit and offer my fellow members on the finance committee an opportunity to report out, I'll be introducing Counselor Hagan as a member of the finance committee first. He will be handling the second reading report of the first item concerning interdepartmental transfer of a one thousand five hundred dollars. I will then be reporting out on the next two supplemental appropriations, as you see down here on the agenda, and which will be followed by the. $159,000 one you see here. That said, if it pleases the President, I would like to ask Counselor Hagan to begin and extend in the floor.
The first public hearing in front of us is a request, following appropriation, a request of $1,500 to be transferred from the reserve fund, transferred to the DPW Highway Department stipend fund in the amount of $1,500. Before we get into this being a cut-and-dry vote, in fairness to the mayor at the Finance Committee, he made it clear that this is more than just a, an up or down vote on $1,500 stipend, that by our approving the $1,500 stipend, it would actually put in motion the completion of the first collective bargaining agreement, I believe, in this, in this, in this cycle of collective bargaining contracts. And this would be the collective bargaining unit of the three DPW supervisors. It's a three-person unit. And the mayor did provide some of the other aspects of what's in the contract so that the council would have full information before, because I, apparently from what the mayor said, if we vote in the $1,500 stipend, we approve the rest of the contract also. And he talked about a additional 5% savings in health care, a provision for weekly to bi-weekly on a 90-day notice with three bi-weekly draws for the employees to get over the, the changeover. There was a slight increase in their clothing allowance to $325, which would not be in their base, an additional $100 in dress clothes, a salary package of 0% the first year, 1.5% the second year, 1.5% the third year, no me-too provisions, meaning if some other collective bargaining unit gets it, they can't come back and add it into their contract. They also would go to five weeks vacation, which is in line with other city employees. The $1,500 stipend, getting back to that, is really only for one of the three supervisors, the individual that is in, in charge of, of plowing. Because he can't receive overtime, this is a $1,500 stipend, which would be paid out in three $500 payments, I believe it's December, January, and February during the snow season for his getting called out during the snow emergencies. And while it's not really part of the project, I will say that whatever's said about the condition of our roads in East Hampton, I think they are some of the best plowed roads. I've driven a lot of roads during the winter, and I think East Hampton's roads, in terms of plowing, are, are, are second to none. I guess I'll leave it at that. I don't know if there's any public comment or other counselor comments.
Mayor Tausig, did you want to add any more to this discussion?
Just clarification, I guess. What we did is remove some language that talked about insurance. We didn't add any new language, but there was language in the contracts that talked about saving an additional. You may recall, three years ago, we put language in the contracts that essentially moved the split, to some extent, for 5%. We, we went to a 75-25 split in East Hampton, 25% employee, 75% city. That went, that was an 80-20. That was contained in the contract along with a clause that talked about further savings by changing the contracts, the, the insurance contract. The language about that further savings has been removed because of the recently passed healthcare reforms, to use the term, by the state of Massachusetts. And so this contract is the, is, as Counselor Hagan said, is the first of the, of the, the three contracts that we're currently negotiating. The other two are in mediation at this point, and, and we'll see where they go from there. I think the rest of the particulars that Counselor Hagan provided are accurate.
So, Mayor, is it true, so by just approving this $1,500, do we ratify or approve the contract, or will we see?
Yeah, that is, that is the case, and I, I try to explain this every time we have a, a contract vote, and thank you for, for reiterating it. No agreement that's executed by my office, by the executive in any community in Massachusetts is binding until it's ratified. The ratification process is the funding process. And so the city council is the final authority on any bargaining, on the city side. On the school side, it's the school committee. So irregardless of whether we come to an agreement or we come to the city council with a mediated settlement that I, that, that management is required to support, the city council's authority still trumps anything that's done at the collective bargaining table. And so your approval of this $1,500 will ratify the contract.
Counselor Wrist?
Mr. Mayor, what's the term, three years?
Three-year contract.
And is it, what's the percentage of increase each year? Three?
Zero, 1.5, and 1.5.
I missed it, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you. Any additional questions for the mayor?
No, no.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else from the public who would like to address the expenditure of $1,500? Okay, now being seen.
Just one other piece of information. This did pass the Finance Subcommittee on a three-to-zero vote.
I think as we can entertain a motion, if you'd like.
I'd like to make a motion that an interdepartmental transfer in the amount of $1,500 be transferred from the reserve fund, transferred to the Department of Public Works Highway Department stipend in the amount of $1,500.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second for the departmental transfer $1,500 from the reserve fund to DPW Highway Department stipend. Any additional discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion passes. Counselor Cobb, I believe.
Thank you, Mr. President. For a second reading, what I have before me is a supplemental appropriation request for fiscal year 2012 dated August 29th. Request is hereby made for approval of a following appropriation. The amount requested is $120,010.46. This has the auditor's approval signature on it, to be appropriated from high school design reserve, the full amount of $120,010.46 to be reduced from debt exclusion taxation, the full amount of $120,010.46. The amount requested would be used for a following purpose, to reduce property taxes through an offset of the cost of excluded debt. What I'd like to note, that this particular request is basically monies that are already collected, and that we are reducing these, and that the actual amount was reduced through recent refinancing. That is why you see a line on it here in your request where we're appropriating money from. That said, the Finance Committee deliberated on this and voted three-to-zero to recommend approval by the full city council, and then, of course, the mayor and the finance director here, if there are any technical questions concerning this request.
Melissa or Tausig, would you just add any more comments or?
Just to, just to clarify.
Just for record, Melissa Zlatzki, finance director, City of East Hampton.
Just to clarify, the $120 is not, is not from a refinancing, that's from the design project that we overborrowed for, and then the, the $40,000 is because of the re, the $4,000 is because of the refinancing.
Okay, I have them backwards. Thank you.
Okay.
Anyone else from the public who would like to address the appropriation of $120,010.46? Non-big, seeing Counselor Cobb, entertain a motion.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion that this is an appropriate use of funds and recommend approval of the supplemental appropriation of $120,010.46 as presented tonight, with the correction from the finance director.
Second. Okay, a motion and a second for the appropriation of the $120,010.46. Any additional comments or discussion? None being seen. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion passes.
Thank you. The next item is a supplemental appropriation. I'll do the second reading on. For a second reading, I have before me a supplemental appropriation request for fiscal year 2012 dated August 29, 2011. Request is hereby made for approval of following appropriation. The amount requested is $4,037. This is signed by the auditor's approval signature, to be appropriated from general debt exclusion reserve, the full amount of $4,037, to reduce, reduce from debt exclusion taxation, the full amount of $4,037. The amount requested would be used for following purpose, to reduce property taxes through an offset of the cost of excluded debt. Again, this is very similar to what I said before, there was one correction, and I thank you for flipping this for me. I had my notes reversed on this. This one is actually due to recent refinancing of the public safety complex, I do believe. That said, again, the finance director and mayor here to entertain any questions that you have.
Okay, instead of actually having them come up, do we have, I've heard it's been forever, do we have any questions for you, the mayor or the finance director, let go that way? Okay, not being said, so I can, anyone from the public who would like to address the council concerning this appropriation? Not being said, count, seen Counselor Cobb, you can entertain a motion then.
Thank you. I move that this is an appropriate use of funds and recommend approval of a supplemental appropriation of $4,037 as presented tonight.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second for the supplemental appropriation of $4,037 from general debt exclusion reserve to debt exclusion taxation. Any additional discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion passes.
I will take this next one. I was clever enough to grab the reduction request, but this is, happy to say, this is, when the budget was, 12 budget was put together, the mayor and the finance director were assuming but borrowing under certain terms and conditions, kind of a combination of their skill and due diligence, since that seems to be the word of the evening, and they were able to get better rates. And so we actually get a reduction of our, reduction of the amount of money that we were going to have to borrow approximately, or exactly, $159,201.73. So with that being said, any additional questions for the mayor or the finance director concerning
this supplemental reduction request? Okay, Counselor Wrist?
I just want to compliment the mayor, the finance director, and tell the public that we're voting for a third time to reduce the potential impact on property taxes for the new high school. That's a reduction, and I'm happy to say that I've hardly ever had the ability to vote on something like that, and it's wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional, Mayor Tausig, comment?
I, I like bringing good news occasionally, so we, we did get a response finally from the MSBA and a, and a draft of the new funding agreement that will bring our costs down to something just over $15 million. We're reviewing that now, and that likely will be, will be approved. There's about a two-week process that we have to go through. MSBA is going to be coming to the site, we're going to sit down and have some detailed discussions about their calculations. But when we went to the voters, we were anticipating that we'd need to borrow nearly $18 million. That borrow, the final borrow is going to come in something just a little bit more than $15 million. So it's been a wonderful start to a project. We've, we've been successful, we've been, to some extent, a little bit lucky. We've had some good activity with the contractors. We, as you know, we've got a contractor that we really do like on this site, and, and we're moving forward. So this, this is a, this high school project is a, is a great success story, and I, and I thank the voters for having the faith in us to be able to allow us to go out with this debt exclusion and to allow us to build this high school. We know that we're moving forward on the middle school. The superintendent got notice yesterday that that project is in need of resubmission to the state, so the Whitebrook Middle School is in line for funding for an improvement project that will handle the heating, ventilation, and air conditioning problems that we have, and that's what's keeping the pool closed. The pool itself has been repaired, the building itself has been repaired. The problem is the air handling unit, the, the air handling units, about 28 of them on the entire building, and the heating system are all, you know, 40-year-old technology that needs to be upgraded. And, and I think we're really on track in eight years or so to be talking about an elementary project. So there are bright days ahead for the City of East Hampton.
So can I ask you, the MSBA, what was their final percentage they're willing to?
No, the percentage doesn't change, but it's the, it's the calculation that's done to determine what is included and excluded in their calculation. And it gets a little bit complicated, but I think the simple version is, when we presented the estimates, they thought that some of the cost estimates were higher than they wanted to participate in, and so they set some ceilings. And they said, for example, we won't participate in construction costs that exceed $275 a square foot. Our estimates had those cost at about $312 a square foot. So they took that difference, that, what is it, $37 difference, and they said, we're not paying for that. Period. It comes off the top, and we don't apply any percentage to that. Well, now that the price has come down to very close to $275 a square foot, they're not doing that any longer. And that was a part of this, this waiting that we've done, is that they needed to review the actuals versus the estimates and to make a determination as to whether we still exceeded any of their assumed allowances, to use a term that isn't theirs, but. And so we're happy that they, that our, our onus project manager submitted what we jointly came up with, is what we thought the program should be looking at, and although we haven't finally gone through all of it, it looks like most of what our assumptions were, were carried by MSBA. So it, it looks like it's very positive for us. Thank you.
Mr. President? Counselor Shadef?
Do any potential unforeseen circumstances and change orders come through at percentages or that handled on a one-by-one basis?
Change orders, yeah. Change orders, it depends on the change order as far as whether MSBA will cover it, and they automatically exclude all, all change orders. So all change orders that come through in the initial round are excluded from reimbursement, as is the budget, the portion of the budget that covers change orders, which is, which is some set aside money we keep for construction contingencies, is also not covered as a part of the, part of the cost share. Now, that said, they do, and we haven't gotten to that step in this program yet, but they do indicate to us that they will look at all of those, and if, if they believe that it's a, it's a change order that is coverable under the program, they will retrospectively include those changes. We have had a few. In particular, we played very close attention to stiffening the ground that that building is, is being built on so that we can be assured of having a very stable construction site. And, and in that process, we've discovered in two instances that there was organic soil, loam, much deeper than, than any of our borings indicated. So we took several borings on the site, extrapolated that into a proposed cross-section of what the site would look like, and that's what the contractor bid on. In, in two areas, there were deep pockets of loam, five or six feet deeper than anywhere out in the site. You know, I don't know how they would have gotten there over the years, one, you know, one can only speculate, but. And so the contractor has legitimately applied for some additional funds to be able to excavate that additional six feet of loam, because we certainly don't want to build a road, and this was all under the roads. We don't want to build a road on a soft site because we'll end up with a parking lot that looks like Whitebrook Middle School. And, and we're really, you know, we're being very diligent about that. So this portion of the project is, had not been significant, but, but there have been a couple of small items. And the contractor's site crew, site subcontractor, has been working closely with our onsite geotechnical and, and, and civil engineers to document those instances so that there's a chance for our professionals to look at it and to make a determination before, you know, the, the construction machinery goes through and eliminates any evidence of what might have been there. I should stop there.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Thank you. You have a question? Okay. Have to ask anyone here from the public who would like to address the council concerning the supplemental reduction? Do I make it for me?
All right, well, no. Counselor Cobb, you want to read the motion, because the President technically can't do it.
Okay. Wasn't aware of that. So...
You can step down.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion, this is an appropriate use of funds, and I recommend that the city council approve the $159,201.73 to reduce from the high school debt exclusion account to reduce debt exclusion taxation. I say that in motion?
Second. Okay, a motion and a second for the approval of the supplemental reduction of $159,201.73 from the high school debt exclusion. Any additional comments, Counselor Cobb?
I'll take a nod from the mayor on this. This is money we haven't collected yet? And the answer is yes.
Yes. Okay. Any additional comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion passes. Counselor Cobb, last one, bring us home here.
Thank you. I'll read this one real slow for you. Supplemental reduction request for fiscal year 2012. This is the second meeting, dated September 21st. Request is hereby made for approval of the following appropriation. The amount requested is $40,000. This does have the new auditor's approval signature on it, Valerie's, is to be reduced from the general reserve fund... Request is hereby made for approval of following appropriation. The amount requested is $40,000. This does have the new auditor's approval signature on it, Valerie's, this to be reduced from the general reserve fund, the full amount of $40,000. The amount requested will be reduced for the following reason, to eliminate a shortfall in general fund revenue in order to complete the fiscal year 2012 recap. Uh, there is some additional information, a little note here that the mayor put on this. I will state this, uh, that, uh, the Finance Committee did vote three-to-zero in favor of this, and I'll state this in my opinion only, I see this as basically a housekeeping item that happens, uh, from time to time. It's a consequence of, uh, the laws that require us to do our budget in a certain period of time, and when the cherry sheet first comes out, and when the final numbers finally come in, sometimes there are some discrepancies. In this case, the assessments were much higher than, than estimated. Uh, should note that the three main areas that were affected were the net cherry sheet or state aids in the assessment brought against them, and, uh, new growth estimates were not as high as expected, and there was a small overlay shortage, uh, that, that occurred also to create this, this big hole. Now, the hole that was created is larger than that $40,000. Uh, the mayor was successful in finding some additional funds to help plug that and, uh, plug that hole. Uh, we need to look at and seriously consider passing this $40,000, so that we can get our recapping in time, which also then helps us get our free cash certified in a timely manner, so that we can, uh, move forward with that. Uh, that said, again, the mayor and the finance director are here, if there are any technical questions concerning this item.
Mayor, Melissa, do you want to make any comments, or are you fine with that? Okay. Seeing anyone from the public who would like to address the council concerning the appropriation of the $40,000? Uh, being seen, Council Cobb, entertain a motion.
Thank you. I've been crossing things out as we go on, trying to shorten this up. Uh, I'd like to make a motion that the city council approve reducing the general reserve fund the amount to $40,000 for the purpose as presented tonight.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to, for the supplemental reduction from the general reserve, uh, fund for $40,000. Any additional comments or discussion? None seen. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Staying? Motion passes.
That concludes.
That concludes.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second. Okay, a motion and a second to close the public hearings, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Staying? Motion passes. Can I motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion to adjourn, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion adjourned. See you two weeks.